We call the April 21st, 2021 meeting of the planning commission to order. We are conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting live online through the city's website as noted on the agenda. Please join Commissioner Watts now as he leaves us in the flag salute and if you would turn off your video. So we can get the flag. Commissioner Watts?
Hang on, here I am. Okay, ready, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a little trouble with the mute button there.
Ah, that happens, right? Okay, can we have the roll call please Stuart?
Yes, but first as a reminder for staff consultants and applicants, please turn off your video and put yourselves on mute until your item comes up. Moving on to a roll call, Commissioner Gario.
There.
Commissioner Tolicio.
Here.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
Here.
Commissioner Watts.
Here.
And Commissioner Yeomans.
Here.
Thank you. We'll move on now to public comment. Do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda?
I do not have public comments for items not on the agenda. But I'll go ahead and read the rest of this. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the planning commission on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for all public hearing items on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of the agenda. Any public comments that were accepted via email or by mail will be read into the record. Details associated with viewing the meeting, reading accommodations, and submitting public comments were available on the agenda and on the city's social media platforms.
Thank you Stuart. We'll move now to consent calendar. All matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine and all being acted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of planning commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Agenda item number one is a recommendation for the approval of action minutes of March 17th, 2021. Do we have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
And a second. Uh, can we have the roll call now for the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Gario.
Aye.
Commissioner Tolicio.
Aye.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
Aye.
Commissioner Watts.
Aye.
And Commissioner Yeomans.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Moving on now to public hearing, we have some comments.
Yes, we will now move to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Any person may submit written comments to the planning commission before or during a public hearing in support or in opposition to the approval of the projects in the manner prescribed in the important notice at the top of the agenda. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at prior to uh, the pub or excuse me, or prior to the public hearing. Any person dissatisfied with a decision of the planning commission may file an appeal of the planning commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after the planning commission decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you Stuart. Now we'll move to agenda item number two, planning application number PA 20 dash 1454. Home product review application for planning area 15 of the raw power ranch specific plan to allow for three unique detached, single family plans with three architectural styles consisting of 45 lots. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Let me share my screen one moment.
Hi, me.
Yes. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
All right. Sounds good. So I'm presenting Summers Bend Home Product Review for Planning Area Number 15. And this is again planning application number PA 20 1454. This project is generally located at the northeast corner of the city. Again, within planning area number 15 of the Aurora Power Ranch specific plan. And to get to this project site, um, the major materials we have is Murray to Hot Springs Road, Nicholas Road, and Butterfield Stage. On this image looking east is a little bit of an older image that showed the grading. And the progress with that, but we have highlighted here planning area number 15, which consists of 45 lots within that red rectangle. And then a little bit of the history on this, um, since 2017, the planning commission has approved or recommended for approval a general plan amendment, two specific plan amendments, uh, five tentative track maps for 1,071 single family lots. A park and ride, two private rec centers, and seven home product reviews for a total of 438 lots. And for planning area 15, this consists of a 9.3 acre area, 45 lots. Uh, single family homes ranging from 2,230 square feet to 2,580 square foot homes. The minimum lot size for the specific plan is 4,000 square feet. And a total of four plans and three architectural styles uh, will be is what is proposed within this area. And I'll get into the architectural style. So this shows Plan One elevations and what I'm highlighting here are the major architectural characteristics of um, the three presented um, of um, architectural styles. So with the farmhouse, some of the major um, elements incorporate the um, front to back main gable roof, the porch with vertical railings and the vertical siding. French cottage features the hip roof, brick accents, and architectural wood elements throughout. And then these um, craftsmen shows the um, siding, the um, stone accent and and the siding materials. One thing with all these, they all have also unique garages that are architecturally compatible to the architectural style as well as the exterior lighting. I'll get into this a little bit more, but um, each of the uh, homes has a standard, which is what you see on the left left hand side. And the enhanced elevations, which is what you see on the right hand side. Um, these are uh, facades that are used with the enhanced architectural style that um, is shown in areas that are visibly seen from the street. So I'll get more into that, but it basically features enhanced siding and enhanced windows on the facades. Here's Plan Two, again with the French Cottage, the American Farmhouse and Craftsman with all of those architectural elements incorporated that I just that I discussed prior. Also, the Plan Two Enhanced Elevations, the standard is what you see on the left with the enhanced on the right, again with the siding and enhanced window treatments throughout. We have Plan Three Elevations, Farmhouse, French Cottage, and Craftsman. And then the enhanced elevations, uh, that's on the Plan Three for the French Cottage, uh, again here with the roofing incorporated and the um, treated enhanced windows as well. Altogether, a total of nine architectural styles will be developed across the site with three iterations of the American Farmhouse, three of the French Cottage, and three Craftsman styles. And um, yeah, each of the styles does have a set of a paint that is architecturally compatible with each of the homes as well. This is what we see from the uh, typical street scene with the landscaping included. And then a view example from uh, behind from the street scene anywhere that has a street, if you could see the side of the home or the back of a home, it has these enhanced elevations. There we go. And here is a uh, product placement plan. The homes with enhanced elevation are highlighted in red. This essentially ensures the quality of architecture is shown at the rear of the homes that are, like I mentioned, that are visible from the street. And um, the product placement plan does ensure an adverse layout with the homes incorporated. So no two styles adjacent or across from each other are um, alike. Or repeated at least. This project per section 15162 subsequent EIR is a negative is a declaration. Um, and the project is consistent with the previously adopted Roar Power Ranch Environmental Impact Report and subsequent tendems. And with that said, staff recommends the planning commission approve PA 20 1454, subject to the conditions of approval. Next concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, the applicant is also here to assist. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm a great report. Um, let's go to commissioners for any comments. Vice Chair Tolicio.
Uh, looks good for what it is. Uh, I don't know if we will ever see another single story house, but I'm waiting.
Okay, Commissioner Watts?
Uh, no, I have not nothing to ask any questions at this time.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
Um, I guess it's just, it'll be nice when we can be in person and actually see the colors and see the materials. It's really hard to tell from the pictures. They look really similar. All three as far as colors. So maybe when the applicant speaks, I can ask him a little bit more. They just looks really similar and it probably isn't, but it just looks that way on the picture. So that was just my question.
Commissioner Yeoman.
No questions.
Uh, just a couple, hi me. Um, on those models that have the shutters, uh, they're going to be proportional to the window size, right?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, and the um, garage doors that we're seeing, is that just standard or are there options available for the garage doors?
Each architectural style of home has a garage that is architecturally compatible to that specific style. And it is something that we're checking when we go on inspections as these homes get developed, constructed.
Okay, and lastly, the uh, the roof material, is it tile or shingles?
Yeah, they're all going to be tile.
Tile. Okay, thank you. Um, does the applicant, well, I'll have to open public comment. Does the applicant wish to comment?
Yeah, commissioners, this is Trent Heiner, uh, representing Woodside Homes. Um, it's a great to see you again. Um, and hopefully in person next time. Um, but we are excited to provide this continued product line, um, and these product and continuing building out here at Summers Bend in the new community. Um, just to add to it, um, answer some of the questions that we've asked. Um, we do strive to get uh, varied colors. And so some of the colors you see there are, you know, muted through digital rendering and and printing. Um, but we do have uh, an employee color consultants that give us a great variety in person and some of those can be seen out here. We have uh, closed homes and homes built that the uh, planning staff is inspected to make sure they're compatible with the the materials boards that we provide to the city. And we do offer optional uh, window treatments in the garages to enhance those. Uh, Commissioner Guerrero.
Thank you. It's good to see you moving forward as well as you are out there. Okay, any, any questions of the applicant? All right, I guess not. Okay, uh, seeing none then, have we received any comments from the public Stuart?
I have received one comment and I've got a part that I want to read yet again. Uh, as a reminder, any public comments that were received by email and mail prior to this meeting will be read into the record. Any person wishing to submit comments during the meeting must submit comments via email prior to the close of the public hearing. For the comment to be considered as part of the record. Email address where comments can be submitted can be found on the agenda. And with that, I do have one email that I received. This was from James Nicholas. And James writes, I have a public comment regarding the Summers Bend project specifically in regards to Nicholas Road. When will Nicholas Road be completed? And why is it not a four lane road to accommodate the large increase in traffic flow that this community along with the new park and trails will be adding? With this large amount of traffic in the near future, this small once country road of two lanes cannot adequately support the new demand. The city should require the developer to build this road now and not leave the burden to us taxpayers to pay in the near future date when this two lane road will be uh, in become inadequate. Sincerely, James Nicholas.
Hey Trent, did you want to respond to any of that?
Uh, yeah, uh, we can. Um, the Nicholas Road extension uh, was designed and planned long, you know, before I even became in the picture. Um, but there are development guidelines and thresholds that, you know, make sure that that road will be built. Um, and it will be funded partly mostly all by this development and the bonds that were were sold for that. So we are in the process of, you know, plan checking and approving those. And we are getting closer to that. Um, and then the construction timeline will be determined once those plans and permits are are gained.
Thank you.
Ron, real quick, um, Ron Marino was prepared to answer that question. I think Trent's done a pretty good job of of addressing it. Uh, but it really comes down to the development agreement. Uh, for Roar Power Ranch covers this and it is a requirement and they can only receive lives 522 uh, building permits uh, before the road has to be under construction. So if Ron has something more to add to that, great. Otherwise, um, we can move on. Thanks.
Mr. Marino, are you there?
Yeah, I think Trent and Stuart have answered it adequately. We are monitoring the building permit thresholds. And we are monitoring and reviewing the plans as well. So if you have any questions for me, I can answer those regarding our review.
So going back a few years, um, I think we discussed, we were going to grade that, grade it out to six and eventually be four. Or we're going to grade it to four and
No, that, no, that is, that is not the case. We do have the right of way um, for to allow for a larger road, but the way that it was conditioned and the way that the traffic analysis was conducted in the EIR dictated that it was going to be our standard um, arterial that would have one lane separated. So in other words, you're going to have two lanes um, going out there. A one in each direction and then a middle lane that will allow for the uh, residents to be able to safely make left turns or, you know, in and out, be able to exit their driveway. So that's the standard that was indicated in the development agreement. And that's the standard that they are going to implement.
Great, thank you. Any further questions of staff or the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll look for a motion in a second.
Oh moved.
Oh, second.
We have a motion in a second. Can we have the roll ball, roll call for the vote?
And it just to be clear, um, I will state that I've just checked my emails and I have received no further comments on this item. And with that, uh, roll call, Commissioner Gario.
Aye.
Commissioner Tolicio.
Aye.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
Aye.
Commissioner Watts.
Aye.
And Commissioner Yeoman.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you Stuart. I'll now move to item number three, uh, planning application PA 20 dash 1478. A modification application to a development plan to add 235 square foot hallway to add a new tower element to the south facade and updated paint and materials for the existing Del Taco restaurant located at 27453 Inez Road. Do we have a staff report please?
Yes, we do. And one, once again, can everybody see this? Okay?
Yes.
All right. So planning application PA 20 1478. This is a modification application to an existing development plan uh, to add 235 square foot hallway and a new tower element to the south facade and updated paint and materials to the existing Del Taco restaurant on Inez Road. This is a point eight seven acre parcel and it is generally located on the northwest side of Ranch, California, and Inez Road uh, within the Tower Plaza Commercial Center at 27453 Inez Road. A little bit information on the site, parking will not be impacted by this addition. There are currently 34 parking stalls on the site and 28 parking spaces are required. Circulation will not be impacted either from this, um, since there is no proposed changes to the um, to the drive through. Currently, restrooms are accessed from the exterior of the building. And the proposed addition, which I've highlighted here in red, um, creates a conditioned space for patrons to access the restroom facilities from now the inside of the building. The architecture and decorative elements are continued throughout north, south, east, and west elevations where the sorry. Um, and what you see in red here is the existing restrooms to get the hallway to connect to the dining room. And also in this area here, you'll see the um, tower element to be added to the south facade. The major elements are going to be incorporated uh, from what is existing uh, to now the the proposed is the mansard roof of the building will be removed to create a squared off facade. You have new sconces to the added to the exterior for illumination. A new stone veneer base, a new tower element added to the southwest facade. And the new decorative finishes throughout the uh, building. And in the bottom, you'll have the uh, examples of the colors that are incorporated across the building um, facade, which includes the Chinese red, modern gray, Java, and Luau green. And in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, the proposed project has been deemed to be categorically exempt from further environmental review. And this is per section 15301, class one, existing facilities. And with that said, staff recommends approval of PA 20 1478, subject to the conditions of approval. Staff is here. If you guys have any following uh, questions, as is our applicant.
If you get, hi me, do we have any comments or questions from staff, Vice Chair Tolicio? Think you're mute, John.
A push card on this thing. And no questions.
Commissioner Yeomans?
I've got no questions, but yeah, that building's been there so long. It, this is a great change.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
Um, just a question for him. I was out there today. So are those colors, the color palette that you have that you had on the screen, is that the same as the colors that are there now? Or is it different in any way?
Um, they are a little bit more vibrant from what I can tell. Um, and I had a sample of the elevations. I can uh, bring that up again here. Um, but no, it's it, it's not the same. And um, you know, over time, the color does fade, but um, overall, this will be essentially something that Del Taco is doing to all of their um, restaurants, including the, any um, restaurants that have currently outdoor um, access to the restrooms. This is something typical that Del Taco is doing now for for their patrons, but um, essentially the paint color is one of those uh, changes as well. It will be
Because the colors look and the color palette look kind of muted as opposed to the picture.
Yeah.
So I was just wondering which is which. It's hard on a screen.
Yeah, what what you're seeing right now is essentially what um, a live image, what you see here is not a rendering, but it is a typical elevation of, you know, an actual photograph.
Okay, so is it the colors on the left or the colors on the right? Because ones on the right are much more vibrant.
Yeah, that's the photograph. It it will most, most likely end up like the colors on the right, um, since that is the the real image.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Watts?
Uh, it's just a welcome improvement to the, to the shopping center there. All of them are are uh, are in need of attention and I think they have really been hit hard by the pandemic, the, all the, all the businesses in those areas. So my hats off. Good, good to see it happening and I hope we continue to see it happen.
Thank you, and I I concur with those comments. Uh, it is good to see um, some changes like this. A long time coming. Um, we have no further questions and I will open the public comment, our public hearing section Stuart.
Okay, once again, uh, as a reminder, any public comments are received by email and mail prior to this meeting will be read into the record. Any person wishing to submit comments during the meeting must submit comments via email prior to the close of the public hearing. For the comment to be considered as part of the record, email address where the comments can be submitted can be found on the agenda.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to address?
Hi, good evening commissioners. Steve Shaw with Army Davis New Love Architects in Santa Monica.
Welcome.
Uh, hope, hopefully, I guess you can hear me okay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, first, I'd like to thank him. He's been very responsive and a big help on this job. It's very refreshing to have somebody uh, actually reply to an email within 48 hours. So he's, he's been a big help and we appreciate his uh, prompt replies and his assistance. Um, just real quick, uh, quick on the follow up regarding the colors, it, this is a problem as it was with the other presentation. That photograph is a recently completed remodel, so they do appear and even in that photograph, you can see on the right, they're a little brighter than the left, depending on the light, but they are a little bit more vibrant than what's on the page and you know, you, you try to specify the RGB values, but it just, the way the digital is. So that photograph is a little bit more representative, although that one side is in the sun, so it's, it's shining a little bit. So probably a a balance between the two. And it's very similar to what's out there, although what's out there has been there a while, so it's a bit faded, but colors are very similar. The bulk of this project and the reason we're doing these on all restaurants is the hallway addition. Uh, luckily, we haven't had too many uh, problems at this location, but at a number of them, there's issues with homeless getting into the restrooms and and drug use and a lot of uh, you know, problems with the exposed restroom. So this was a feature to add this hallway to give customers the opportunity to use the restrooms freely without getting a token. And also post COVID to keep them maintained better. It's more comfortable for the employees later at night to get in there and clean them. So it's uh, it's, we were doing it for both those reasons, but thank you for the positive comments. It's much appreciated.
Thank you, and we always appreciate positive comments for our staff because they do a great job all the time. Uh, any other questions of the applicant then?
I don't have a question, but just a comment. Um, thank you, Steve, for answering those questions and I think obviously the hallway with the bathrooms inside is a great improvement, right, to what is there now? And, you know, personally, I like the muted look a little better than the bright, but it's kind of like I said, it's kind of hard to tell. So hopefully, anyway, any kind of upgrade will be nice, like Gary was saying, in that shopping center. So thank you.
Okay, seeing no others, uh, Stuart, we um, have any public comments?
I have received no public comments for this item.
Okay, if there's no further questions of staff or the applicant, uh, we haven't received any additional public comments, then um, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion and a second.
I saw move.
My second. We have the role, please.
Commissioner Gario.
Hi.
Commissioner Taliio.
Hi.
Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Hi.
Commissioner Watts.
Hi.
And Commissioner Yeomans. And motion carries five oh.
Thank you.
That takes us to commissioner reports. Uh, because we are in a virtual setting, I'll ask colleagues individually for their comments. So Vice Chair Taliio?
I have none.
None? Commissioner Watts?
Yeah, we joked before about the Gary and Gary show on the commission. Well, guess what? We now have three Garys on the commission. I don't know what I did wrong, but I now have closed captioning on my bottom of the screen. And every time your name comes up, it says Gary as in Gary and then O as in O H. So uh, I don't, I don't know what I did, but anyhow. That's it.
That's it. Okay.
A little levity, hopefully.
Commissioner Yeomans?
Well, there's never a good time to do this. I'll just do it. My wife and I have sold our house.
Oh.
And I will be stepping down from the commission.
Oh.
Two second meeting. So now there'll be two Garys again.
Wow.
We uh, we're uh, we don't have a place to go yet. We're looking in Tucson. But the housing situation is the same there as it is here, but it's a, it's a chance to be close to family. And um, we've reached that point where, you know, a lot of change is gonna be made. Change, change is good. So uh, I was gonna email everybody and I figured, you know what, I'll do it in the live setting instead. I've already let Luke know. And he's the city clerk, don't everybody else, so. I've enjoyed my time here. And echo stuff they were on has said in my time with the uh, traffic and safety and now with the public works. Staff has made this this job, both of them tremendously easy. You give us complete reports, good information to deal with. And um, I love this city. And I'm glad that hopefully, glad it's doing well and hopefully that I've made an impact. So, thank you for everything, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Wow.
Where we at? Commissioner Charlie Trejo?
Okay, wow, wow, lots of changes.
Double header tonight.
Basically, didn't know about either of you till tonight. So um, I heard a little bit that Mary Ann said Ron at the last city council meeting, but I didn't know what that meant, so that you were moving. Anyway, you are going to be missed. Um, one thing that I talked to the city council members about, because they were talking at one point, and I don't know if they're still talking about about term limits for commissioners. And one thing I said to each of them is kind of my opinion is, you know, when I got on, I thought, wow, you know, John and and Ron have been here like forever, right? And I've realized through my time on the council, how important that's been, that your knowledge, your background, um, just your history with the city, because things don't get built right away, right? We've learned that. And so, you know, there's so much knowledge that you both have had through the years of things that happened, you know, twenty, twenty-five years ago. And so I've realized how important that is on our particular commission to have experienced people or people that have even lived in the city for a long time, that it helps on a, on a planning commission. And so personally, I have appreciated you, Ron, so much for all that you've done and for helping me feel comfortable as a new planning commissioner. Um, coming on very inexperienced and um, I appreciate all that you've done and all that I've learned from you um, as far as being on this commission. And we'll miss you a lot, you know, cause you say things and you're like, oh, yeah, I remember when that happened and all this happened and that happened. It's like, okay, you know, we're gonna miss that, cause that's really helpful, as Stu was saying. And Gary, that's a shock. So, but I under. What?
It surprised even me.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, you guys are Temecula people too, so. Um, but we can say more about you. You're not done. This isn't your last meeting, but I wanted to really um, highlight Ron tonight and thank him for all you've done, Ron. Appreciate it.
No, I think you've come a long way for, you know, being, being placed on this commission with no prior experience uh, on another commission uh, is not an easy task, as you and I discussed a few years ago.
Yeah.
Um, but you know, you've come a long way. Um, obviously, you've learned and you'll continue learning. Uh, this is an ongoing process.
Yeah.
So it's a, you know, it it's it's really, it's good to hear. I appreciate the kind words. So it brings us to uh, where were we? Vice Chair Taliio? Did we hit you? Who did you first?
I think I got the first one.
You got the first one. Has everybody made comments except me? Okay, I guess it's my turn. Well, you you've heard it before and I'll say it again. Um, there's one commission that gets all the kudos, um, and they work hard. This commission, this this committee, our 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 staff um, doesn't get the recognition it deserves. You know, to do what they do during especially hard time like this pandemic year, uh, to do it from a virtual setting, to go through all the hoops that you have to go through on a project. I mean, citizens have no idea how long it takes to get a project prepared and and ready to move forward. Months, even years. And all they see is just, you know, when it's presented. Uh, there's a lot that goes into it and I can honestly say that that this staff um, that I've worked with the past few years is is one of the best. I mean, the most dedicated people. Uh, the most intelligent, uh, most experienced. And I've learned a lot from them. Uh, here we have a director and it said, well, Luke grew up in the city. And uh, that brings a special, a special spice to to any position. Uh, you know, he he really loves the city as we all do. And I first came here in nineteen seventy-eight. We had six thousand population. And uh, finally moved here in nineteen eighty-seven, eighty-eight. We had twenty-four thousand. Now we're at a hundred and fourteen thousand. So a lot of changes, uh, all all good. And I think it's gonna continue to get good. I think what we're in right now, Luke, is um, kind of a maintenance mode. Um, if you will. So, you know, we're doing a great job. And and the one comment, I I think we we all hear it when we talk to friends, when we talk to neighbors that come in. Um, why did you move to Temecula? Well, I came down to visit wine country of Pachanga. And I saw how many churches you had, how many parks you had, how clean the city was, how safe it felt. Now we decided to move here. That's, that's, that's something. I mean, that's something to be to have pride in. Knowing that you've been a small part of of developing something like that. So, yeah, it's, I'm gonna miss it. It's been a great run. Anyhow, that's that's it for me. Uh, do we have any subcommittee reports? No subcommittee reports. All right, then we have community development director report. Nice for watching.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, you know, um, a lot's been said. Um, but I want to add my two cents. Um, just from the staff perspective, you've always been so supportive of staff and and I just want to let you know that we've always very much appreciated that. Um, we were talking a little bit earlier, uh, and you were mentioning how hard staff works and, you know, um, I was mentioning that, you know, it 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 actually is the planning commission, when you have dedicated folks who care about the city, who are knowledgeable and have history, it makes our job easy. Um, and so I I just want to say thank you for that over the years. Um, I don't think there's a staff member on the team that hasn't appreciated uh, in in a commission meeting that was controversial or um, uh, had uh, you know, public comment that was getting heated. And to have um, a a planning commissioner like yourself to be able to um, calm things down by imparting historical wisdom onto the, onto the issue. Um, and kind of bringing it back, that those, those things are hard to replace and we're gonna miss that. Uh, we've got great commissioners now that have a lot of history. Um, but you know, obviously you cannot be replaced and um, I just want you to know that. Um, and like you said, I did grow up here in town. I I've known you for uh, many, many years. I've known your family. Um, so it's um, it's it's been really special and uh, so thanks again. And I do have something for you. It's the coveted gavel.
Oh, the gavel, hey.
This one, this one is a little different. This one's a little different. This one is to Ron Gario in appreciation of your dedicated services, planning commission chairman to the citizens of Temecula, but it's for nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, two thousand one, two thousand six, two thousand twelve, two thousand sixteen and two thousand twenty-one. That is a chairmanship record in the city of Temecula. And that is something that will probably not be beat. So congratulations on that. But there's more.
Oh.
That's just for the chairmanship. We wanted to give you another one because I know that you served on the Public Traffic Safety Commission, actually before it was even called the Public Traffic Safety Commission. And this is for all of your time here, serving the cities, the citizens of Temecula. And it's to Ron Gario to honor your hard work, enthusiasm and dedication, contributing to a better quality of life in our community and serving the residents of the city of Temecula from October nineteen ninety to April two thousand twenty-one. A, a service uh, length and term bettered only by Peter Thorson, the city attorney himself. So you are one of two that have this long of a tenure in the city and that's really something. And and you know, that's something to be proud of. So again, thank you, Ron. Um, and um, you know, uh, hopefully we'll be seeing you soon. And of course, we're gonna be seeing you at the, at the city council meeting here next week to honor you again. So thank you.
Oh, thank you so much, Luke. I really appreciate that. And again, small part of a great, great group, you know, that's put this thing together over the years. And I first started with Town Association back in the eighties. And that's where I met Pat Burgzall and Peg Moore. Um, all those folks that were gonna go on. Ron Roberts and I served on the first traffic commission. He went on to, you know, a very stellar career with the, with council, as you know. Um, so there's been a lot of great people uh, that have made Temecula what it is. It's a very special city. And will always be special to me and we're gonna come back. Uh, so you're not rid of me completely. But uh, anyhow, I really appreciate the uh, the words and the kind words from everybody. Okay, if um, that's all, folks, we will look for a motion to adjourn. When's the next meeting? May fifth, twenty twenty-one?
Wait, are you gonna have Ron Marino?
Oh, did I miss Ron?
I have some questions for him.
I I apologize.
I think, I think it's just because Luke said it all so well, so it just fitting end, but uh, we'll certainly miss you, Ron and Gary. And I did uh, let Pat know and he says he looks forward to seeing you at the city council meeting. Um, and he'll pass along his well wishes then. Uh, but it's been a, it's been a pleasure to work with you both and wish you the best.
Thank you. And you know, I I can, I can remember when it was brought up at the planning commission level that we should have somebody from public works at our meetings. Uh, Pat was gracious enough to step in at that point and then hand the torch off to you. And you've done an amazing job. I mean, you you keep us on track. Um, it and it helps. People look at us as planning commissioners. They want to know what's going on.
Yeah.
It's nice to be able to give them an answer. Um, it may not be the same one you give them, but you know, we give them an answer. So thank you uh, for everything you've done. Appreciate it.
I just had a couple of questions for Ron, if I could. Um, I know at the city council meeting, they talked about the sports park bathroom being or and the concession area being renovated. Um, can you just kind of talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, we were doing a few right now in in reference to what specific one?
Uh, Ronald Reagan Sports Park.
Oh, yes. So that's being redone. Um, that is a complete remodel of the existing facility, including a walkway around it, around it. And so that just kicked off recently. Yes.
Okay. Um, and then I, you know, you probably, I, this is just something that I so uh, maybe Luke can answer this, but on the Summers Bend Sports Park, so that name is gonna be changed to Summers Bend instead of Rory Paw. Is that?
That's actually going to be the Sports Ranch at Summers Bend. That's the new name of it.
Sports Ranch at Summers Bend. Okay. And then last question, maybe for Luke. I know they've been going back and forth at city council about meetings being open and back at city hall. What's the latest on that? For us?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'm not sure, but as soon as I know something for sure, I will let you guys know.
Okay.
I don't think it's a settled business yet.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Now, before we have a motion to adjourn, I I I am I'm remiss if I don't say something about Candace. We've we've had three attorneys on our commission since I've been on since ninety-seven. So there was Bill was the first one. You were the second. Now Masal is the third. And top notch all the way. I I I don't think our commission could ask for, you know, anybody better. So thank you for everything you've done and keeping us on track and, you know, good luck with you and your family.
Thank you so much. I really love the city of Temecula and it's always been just an amazing joy to work with all of you and we'll really miss you, Ron. So I wish you the best of luck with everything.
Thank you. Okay, that said, now we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
Second.
Second, okay, Stuart?
There we go. Sorry about that. Uh, Commissioner Gario.
Hi.
Taliio.
Hi.
Charlie Trejo.
Hi.
Watts.
Hi.
And Yeomans.
That does it, everybody. God bless. We'll see you. See you around town.
See you guys. Thanks.
Take care.
Bye.